We'll start with pledges of the flag. We know there's a flag on the island, so face the island. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody in our PAC B audience to Mercer Park, one of our beautiful spots in the village, great chance to show off our park. Mighty Seneca rolling by, and we got perfect weather. So we'll start the June 2 meeting with a public hearing to consider a proposed local law authorizing the village board and other village public bodies to use video conferencing technology to participate in public meetings. Mal, can we get a reading of the proof of publication?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York and pursuant to resolution of the village board of the village of Baldensville adopted May 5, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the village board at Mercer Park, 1 North Street on the second day of June 2022 at 7:00 p.m. to consider a proposed local law authorizing the village board and other village public bodies to use video conferencing technology to participate in public meetings. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the village clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody from the public wishing to speak against the proposal? See, no one. Can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. All right, we'll move on to the regular village board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the public hearings and village board meeting minutes from May 19, 2022?
Move.
Second.
Any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to address the board? No? Okay. Move on to trustees' comments. We'll start with Eric.
I'll stick to the agenda for tonight.
Thanks, Eric. Bruce?
The agenda's fine, thanks.
We're on the side. Ruth?
I just wanted to mention the Memorial Day Parade that we had this past Monday, and it was nice to see the, excuse me, the parade in full swing again this year, and I think it was a great success. And thank you to everybody involved. There's too many people to mention, but there's a ton of people to thank to help pull that all together. Other than that, just the agenda.
Thanks, Ruth. Nate?
Just like the second Ruth said about the Memorial Day Parade, and outside of that, just stick to the agenda.
No sports updates?
No. You know, we knew that.
Don't do it.
We were gonna crush Liverpool on the section championship, so, yeah, we moved on.
Now, does anybody realize that's your sister coach?
Yeah, my sister's the coach.
That's how you know all the details.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they've had a great run so far. Keep it going.
They're gonna be good. Corning's tough. It's down in Corning. I think it's in the morning on Saturday, and the boys play at 12:30 Saturday at CNN.
Okay, nice to have a doubleheader sweep.
Yeah, I know.
I wish you good luck to me.
Yeah, thanks.
Megan?
Just the agenda for me, thank you.
Shep?
The agenda. It's good. I'm glad to be outside. This is really nice.
Yeah, it's kind of nice. I've got a few things. I want to second what other people have said about the parade. It was really nice to see so many people on the streets. Saw Meg sitting with two of my favorite young ladies, Juanita and your mom, and that was one of the highlights of my trip across the bridge. It was nice to be out, and it was a beautiful day, and for all the right reasons that we celebrated. It was terrific. I have a letter sent to us from Linda Ross. She's our former deputy clerk, and she's huge cog in the parade. She sent a note, "Please accept our gratitude for the successful Memorial Day Parade and ceremony that was held Monday, May 30, 2022. Above and beyond the financial support that's granted to committee by the village of Baldensville, the town of Lysander, and the town of Amburin, the behind-the-scenes work done by our village staff prior to the parade is what helps make all the difference. The Department of Public Works, who take weeks before the parade to get the sidewalks and streets ready, make us all so proud. It's a lot of extra work in their day, and each year before the parade is held, the workers go beyond just getting the flags on our streets raised and the flowers placed along the village streets to make everything look its best. They do the work that makes the gathering area shine, and they assure our committee that we're ready to go. We appreciate the effort and see the hard work they do every day. The Police Department, who help keep the parade in order and also help us all year long with decisions made to keep our residents their safest on parade day, make us all proud of the day-to-day work that they do. Before, during, and after the parade, their continued presence who employ their day-to-day knowledge of their profession to again make us know that we are good to proceed and that we can run our ceremony and parade smoothly. It is appreciated. The Clerk's Office staff, who helping their day-to-day duties to answer the many questions that were directed their way, make us all proud and thankful for their continued time and patience as we try to get the word out to all about making the parade a success. Their kind help daily to direct questions and comments our way is most certainly appreciated more than they know. The community certainly thanks all the village board for enabling the staff to ensure that the help they give us leading up to the parade is there. Their participation in our continued show of honor and tributes to our fallen soldiers on parade day is so important for this community each year. We're lucky to work together as a committee to keep this important Memorial Day tradition alive in Baldensville." Signed, the Memorial Day Committee, Marshall Lamoran, Don Collette, Gary Brown, Mike Lockwood, Ruth Seiko, Kim Heppernan, and Linda and Tom Ross. And that committee deserves all of our gratitude for doing a great job. As I pointed out the other day, I'm guessing they're gonna be meeting in a week or two to start next year's parade, because it takes that long. What did we do right? What did we do wrong? What can we do better? And I certainly appreciate it, having grown up in this village and watched that parade for so many years, and at that time thinking that parades just sort of happen. But we all know parades don't just happen, and not be good parades. So for everybody, everywhere, who had anything to do with the parade, thank you very much. Saturday night at the square is the Spring Fling. The Chamber's hosting a Spring Fling, which will do some drink samples, some food, and karaoke singing, from 4 to 7 in a tent at the square. I would call tomorrow. Well, I don't know when anybody will see this, but they had a limit on how many people could attend, so tell your friends to, if they want to go, they better check and see if they can still get in. Farmer's Market is set to start June 14, 3 to 7. Again, that's at the square. They had thought about starting this Tuesday, and the farmers asked for an extra week so they'd have more produce. So that's a good sign. Next weekend, not this week, but next weekend is the Rotary Seneca River Days. Looks like a great event. The Friday night is the big party, social thing with all the bands, food trucks and fireworks, $5 admission to get you out there for all that. Pretty good deal. And the bands include the Beeville Band, the school band, and the main band is Dirt Road Ruckus, which is a terrific party band, so people should have a lot of fun. And then Saturday's the family event, more geared to kids, and the duck club. I guess you can still buy ducks, right, Bruce? You're a Rotary guy?
Buy ducks right up until about 4 o'clock that afternoon.
So people could go on Facebook and find somebody that's in Rotary and get ahold of them? That way you're guaranteed?
Or Beeville Supply, or on weekends, there's people there selling all the time.
Okay, good. Big event to look forward to for us. July 16, Margarita Fest returns, which is always one of the big hits. It's always fun to ride through town and just see people wandering all over the place. Probably by the time I see them, they've had enough margaritas, they don't know where they're going, but we've not had any problems with that. I mean, you know, people seem to take pretty good care of themselves that day, and the businesses open up, and it's just a great day to show off for everybody, so.
I did have a chance to talk to Chief about that. He's planning on possibly putting out a couple of bike patrols. That's the only additional need from the village for the events, actually.
Good time to break out the bikes.
Absolutely.
I did get a message from Cork the other day to remind people, they're still requiring people to wear masks when they come in the building. If you have a reason to get ahold of anybody at the court, you can go on the village website, and they have the court clerk contacts, email, phone numbers, and they also have the forms that you might need to pay off a ticket or that type of thing. So you don't have to come in the office ahead of time. You can get that stuff online on the website. I think that's about it. I know when I, the Farmer's Market, I'm pretty excited, but I thought the guy, Don Bodry, who came in the other night at the last meeting, was pretty spot on. He prepared. And so that makes you feel good that somebody's coming in and not gonna start and go, "Okay, where do we go?" I mean, he's used to that kind of stuff, so I think we should have a good event. Look forward to it. Okay, so we're done with that. Department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda.
All righty. Village clerk, Mal?
Just wanted to let you know that Chuck from Creative Concerts, when he spoke at one of the last meetings, he had said that his insurance would be in on the 24th, I believe. Well, we did receive it today, so our insurance agent said that it was fine, so at this point, everything's a go.
Beautiful. Never wait till the last minute, though, right?
No. No, but this is good. This is.
This is actually early, right?
No, this is great. We are excited. Otherwise, he's only, I believe, announced four concerts. I think next week he will announce the balance of the concerts and whether or not the fireworks will be held on the first. Otherwise, that's up to the agenda.
Good, Mal. Thank you. Treasurer, Mark Baker?
Two things. I did attend that budget workshop today, and I know a couple of the expressed interest to me about catching up with it. They're going to release a link. It was recorded, and it'll be online, probably in a week or two, I think they said, but it's extremely enlightening, and I would recommend you to watch it, because we're gonna have to make some changes in how we do things in the fall and to be in compliance with putting the budget together. So, and budget monitoring throughout the year. We'll probably make some of those changes as soon as we start regularly getting financials out, too. So probably the most notable thing is modifying the budget on a real-time basis when we are going to deviate from the appropriation side. So we have to, if there's a change to an appropriation line that needs to happen or we're gonna exceed that line, then it needs to be approved by the board via a change to the budget before we spend that money, which is a big change.
So do you think we should mandate board members watch this and/or maybe department heads?
That's actually not a bad idea.
I mean, we can all get together, popcorn in the big room.
Yeah. I don't know if it was that exciting. It's only, it's only an hour, and it does move along pretty good. They were very quick with it, and they're very direct and concise with the points, and it's not rocket science or anything like that, so.
Can you make sure that the link to where we can see that video is available?
Yeah, as soon as I get it, I'll get it out to you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the second thing is you got financials for March, so I would encourage you all to look at them and give me feedback, and April is being worked on now, and we should be up to where we're current and producing current financials very soon. And I think I put in the email that I sent to everybody, the plan, which is to keep our CPA firm looped in on what I'm providing you as a control on me, number one, and then also just as a second set of eyes for how the numbers look, am I doing everything correctly, those kind of things.
Good idea. All right. How was the Allison Gross-Robert Plank concert?
Oh my gosh. It was, it was unbelievable. I mean, you talk about, there's living legend, there's only a handful of those kind of people, and they covered like three or four Led Zeppelin songs, which was enough for me.
You gotta go see McCartney.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was awesome.
Good for you. All right, we'll move on to the senior center. Ruth?
I just want to say a tiny bit about the parade. It was wonderful, of course, and I want to thank trustee Shepherd's dad, Derek Shepherd, Sr., for making a float possible for us. He was a great help to us and provided an opportunity for us to have a float in the parade. So thanks to him and for those people that were with us that day. We have a lot of music coming up. I just want to remind folks that George Lea's concert rescheduled for this coming Monday, June 6, at 1:00. On the 14th of June in the evening, 7:00, there'll be the Lafayette Community Band. And on June 27, at 2:30, will be Rock Shadows, and they do favorite rock and roll tunes. Also, we are having a speaker from 911 come and explain about 911 and how to make a 911 call and why they ask you the questions they asked and provide some clarification on that for folks, and that's Monday, June 13, at 2:30. And also, the mammography van will be at the senior center on June 17. They do need to make an appointment for that, so give us a call, and we can, I'll give you the information on who to reach out to for an appointment for that. And some of our summer events are coming up, so be planning ahead for the car show on August 8 for our first golf tournament on September 12 and our walk on September 17. So those are ways to support the center. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Lot going on. Public Works, Mr. McColl?
We finally got the kayak launches back in the community park. There was some ice damage. They've done some of the poles there, weren't able to get out there. We got, the highway got out there this week, got the poles out. We changed some floats in the ramps, because the floats were bad from when we got to them, and it was just, it just didn't work well. Just a quick reminder that that's a kayak launch. It's usually mobbed with fishermen to the point where the kayakers can't get on it. So it's a kayak launch. It's not a fishing platform. That's, they were on it before we left fishing, so that's one of the.
Jason can make sure.
Yeah, I'd be right at top priority.
When we kick up the property checks, once it gets really busy in there, that's one of the things we address, because it's pretty clearly labeled there. So it's not like somebody can really even mistake it, but we try to stay on top of those stuff.
Thank you. And brush pickup start next week. Again, the sidewalks are, we're pretty much done. I think we have a little bit more topsoil to do on East Tennessee Street. We're gonna want to get back in there and finish that, and if I could just ask drivers, if they could just slow down. We had people almost get hit out there. They just didn't. Lysander had one of their fires got hit just up the road, I think, last week or the week before. People just won't slow down. They won't give us a break, you know? And if they can just slow down a little bit. Other than that, the flowers, the benches are out. Water's still trying to, still getting in houses for the meter change out. We're still on the south side. We're getting to some of the problem properties, not so willing to let us in the houses, and it's gonna get down to where we gotta get in. And, you know, now that things have loosened up, you know, we notify them three times if we can't. We have been in contact with the health department, and what we can do is terminate the water outside, and then usually we get in right away. We very, very seldom have to do that, but we've got a handful that just won't call us back. Usually, usually when we put the flag out and put some blue paint around to shut off, it helps. But other than that, you see the parks are open now. Things have cleaned up good, and now we're ready for summer.
Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. We get the flower people in, we have the summertime people in. Highway's been helping them get a lot of that stuff done, and it's gone well. And we also are gonna be filling two highway positions this summer. It's on the Facebook page now, so we're taking applications for labor's positions. We do need CDL licenses for that. We had one gentleman leave, and we have another one that's retiring in a few months. So other than that, we'll stick to the agenda.
Thanks, Chuck. Coast Department, all right?
I will stick with the agenda tonight.
Police Department?
Nothing much for me. Just happy to be here. It's a nice break from my normal day, so.
It's always nice when you hear that there's nothing much happening from the police side of things.
Well, no, it's.
You were lying to us.
I will say, the last couple of weeks, it's been pretty, it's been pretty active, but the guys are doing a good job, so they're getting there.
Good to see you. Move on to pending business. Can I get a motion approving the local law authorizing the village board and other village public bodies to use video conferencing technology to participate in public meetings? Nate? Second?
Second.
Ruth? Any questions?
Why? We, I don't understand why we're even discussing this. It doesn't seem like we need to. In my, during time on the board, we've never had any problem where somebody misses a meeting, they miss a meeting. Somebody can't fulfill their obligation as a trustee that resigned. I just don't understand why we're doing it. We're covered by state law and emergencies. This just doesn't make sense to me.
I guess the problem is that, you know, people are on the road for important decisions and votes and want to be a part of it and have no choice. They can't be at the meeting, but they want to be on record as voting.
Okay, and we have not defined what the extraordinary circumstances that the law requires. They haven't been defined yet, so how do we pass the law when we don't know what the circumstances are? And I don't think being on the road qualifies. I'm sorry, Dick, I think if you're out of town, you're out of town. That's why we have a board of seven. So if I'm out of town, you guys go four. You don't need me. I might think it'd be nice, but.
Well, I think the last meeting, Ruth couldn't walk, and so she wanted, still wanted to participate in the meeting, so she was, she's allowed to do that. Technically, before this, if you were gonna be at your home, you had to tell people where you were, and they had to be allowed to come and watch you participate. Never quite understood why, but so she was able, you know, to watch the meeting, and she could be a part of the meeting the next time. Bobby, any clarification at all?
Well, no, I mean, the policy can be determined by the board, and I would, it's a lot easier to have the policy as determined by the board by resolution, and right now, it would be on a case-by-case basis, unless you wanted to adopt a resolution that determined what those extraordinary circumstances would be, as opposed to trying to define it in the statute, which meant that any time a question came up, then you have to have a public hearing and redo the law, as opposed to having the board, who can make their own rules as to procedure, make that determination. But this, the state, again, having gone through the pandemic the way we have, the state adopted this law to allow municipalities to adopt a local law which extends the remote participation that they already have. So if the board wants to move forward, and again, you can limit it or make your own determination as to what constitutes an extraordinary circumstance and what doesn't.
Yeah, according to what you shared us, that Chapter 56, we must establish written procedures that set forth what they determine to be extraordinary circumstances. We haven't even discussed it.
Does this affect all boards, though? I mean, for the zoning, and I think a perfect example is, isn't someone not going to be able to make it, and then they will not have enough to vote on it, and then they would have to wait?
Possibility, yeah.
Another month? I mean.
Okay, that also addresses quorums.
Right. Well, quorum has to be present physically.
Yeah, it's physically. You have to have physical form.
So the individual that's off-site doesn't count in the quorum?
You gotta have that physical form. If you have that, then that person can vote.
Okay. So, yeah, I wasn't familiar with what, you know, this was going to allow for the other boards.
Assume everybody looked at the materials Bob provided us?
I, too, had questions about what would constitute, you know, a circumstance that would allow it, and we don't really have that defined at this point, but that's certainly something we could do. I mean, I like the idea of it, the concept of it, because if somebody is disabled or sick, you know, and they still are able to participate, the bulk, the public's able to come here, that person's vote isn't excluded from it then because of something that's going on. But, yeah, I think we do need to define what are the cases we're gonna allow. I mean, I want to fly off the aruba, but I'd like to be part of the meeting. Is that an extraordinary circumstance we want to allow because I really want to be a part of this vote? Or I'm homesick and I want to, you know, I'm not capable of coming to a meeting, but I can sit there with my bedpan and participate? Great.
Don't do that.
But like with Greg's boards, they have emergency meetings, and they had one recently for the zoning board, and somebody might be in a aruba and not have known ahead of time this was gonna happen, and they want to, they want to vote no on something. They want to be on record. That would be an extreme circumstance, in my mind. Maybe we should put out voting and come up with a description of what we're thinking. Makes sense, Bob?
Sure, if you would like to do that. If you adopt them both at the same time. All right, so what? But the, just so that the board is aware, the, if the law isn't adopted, the remote participation under the new rules will not apply going forward, because they sunset at the end of this week. So we, you'd still be able to have remote participation, which we have had in the past, but it would be under the old rules where there would have to be public, the ability to have public participation at the site where you are.
Right. Or we function like we have for the last 15 years, and it's when there's a state of emergency declared by an executive, as opposed to, for example, when my wife died, I didn't attend a board meeting at none. I didn't want to do it video-wise either.
But nobody expected it, right?
That's extraordinary to me.
But times have changed. I mean, we learned that in the 2020. That's the whole thing that we've all, many odd jobs are completely remote now, and this job with video, the way it operates in the internet, we don't need to keep doing business as usual. We can kind of adjust it.
I agree, but you need to be accountable to the public, and that's very difficult to do 100% on video.
I mean.
You can't be a snowbird.
Just as easy as, yeah. Well, that would be, once again, we gotta define what's extraordinary circumstance. If you're a snowbird, and that's your extraordinary circumstance, that's why I'd like that defined.
Is this something we can pass and then work on coming up with a description of extraordinary circumstances, or?
You could adopt it and then take the position that it wouldn't be allowed until you adopt the regulations.
Is there a deadline on how long you got before you have to approve this?
No.
Are most of you in agreement with Bruce, or would you prefer to just vote and work on establishing the guideline?
I'm comfortable with having the law in place. I think, like Eric said, you know, we're, we're a much more technologically advanced society now, but I, I would not want to see it implemented until we had a policy in place. But I think when, when I had first asked Bob about it, he kind of explained that this was the part one, and part two is defining or developing the policy, so.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead and. Go ahead and take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Dick?
I'll vote.
Nay makes sense.
Three, I'm going to oppose two.
So, it's 4-3. Okay. New business. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation of DPW employee Cedric Oaks effective June 13th, 2022?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Item B, motion authorizing the treasurer to encumber $58,052.32 from the 2021-2022 general fund, $34,000 from the 2021-2022 water fund, and $34,000 from the 2021-2022 sewer fund. We have an attached list of requested encumbrances if anybody hasn't checked it.
I'll make the motion as long as the treasurer tells me it's still legal to do.
Falls into better light than no.
Okay.
Have a second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Item C, motion to declare the following justice court equipment as surplus, three computer monitors, two scanners, two keyboards, and one scan snap.
Both.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Item D, discussion possible action to approve the proposed Canton Woods annual report.
Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request that the board table this until the next meeting. The treasurer and I would like an opportunity to speak with Mr. Baldwin just for some clarification on terminology.
Okay.
The data on the report is accurate, but there's some things that we just want to tidy up a little.
Okay.
We just learned about tonight.
Very good.
Do you need a motion to table that, then?
No, it was on for a discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else that anybody would like to discuss before we pay bills? Actually, I would, I needed, I forgot, I needed to schedule an executive session, so good thing I remember that. Anybody have anything else that we need to discuss when everybody's still here? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn the executive session?
What's the executive session on?
This is personnel.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry.